Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:05. Councilman Parker, would you introduce the member of clergy that will be giving the invocation?
Thank you, President Protam. Since I do not see my person, I'll pray myself. Good afternoon, everybody. Hope you had a great day. Let us pray. Again, Lord God, we come this evening giving you thanks for your grace, your mercy, your concern, and your long-suffering and love for each and every one of us. We ask that you would guide the hearts and minds of our council and our administration, Lord God, that we might do that which will enrich, encourage, and uplift your people, that will be best for Pontiac, and that you might be pleased. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I thank you, Pastor Parker. At this time, please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we want to take time to remember those of our neighbors and family members that have passed since our last council meeting. Christopher Michael "Spice" Spencer, Audre L.A. Washington, and Crystal Burrows and all those others that I'm not mentioning tonight, but hopefully we just want to offer our condolences to their particular families. At this time, we also like to take a moment of silence to remember those who are with us today solely in spirit. May they live in our hearts forever. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call. Councilmembers, Clerk Doyle, please call to roll.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. I need a motion and a second to excuse councilmembers McGinnis and Rutherford for personal reasons.
So moved.
It's been moved by Nicholson, supported by Parker, that we excuse councilmembers McGinnis and Rutherford for personal reasons from the evening's meeting. Can I get a roll call?
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. I need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Parker and seconded by Nicholson. Are there any amendments?
I need to make a motion to amend.
What is that motion?
I would like to postpone item number four until both Councilwoman Rutherford and Council President McGinnis are back from their conference.
Is it possible for us to do that at the time we come to that item on the agenda?
If...I am also open to us having discussion tonight and then tabling it for the following week, if we can do that.
Yes, we can. That's what I was planning on doing with that particular...
So you have to remove...you have to... Well, so technically the motion has been made. There hasn't been a second for it.
It hasn't been a second, so it's not officially a motion. There's a second.
Yep. So if we can agree to that, I am fine with...
Yes, that was my intent.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, you also...you wanted to do a discussion?
Yes. Thank you for reminding me. Can I also add a discussion item regarding a report back on the pullover prevention clinic from...that I did in my district, what, now, two weeks ago?
Okay, said pullover...
Pullover prevention clinic report back.
Okay. I'll second that motion, and we're going to put that actually right before...I'm going to say right after public communications. I'm going to say right after public comment. We will put that items there to add your amendment. So it's been a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to include a discussion on pullover prevention clinic that Councilman Goodman had this past weekend.
Two weekends ago.
Two weekends ago. Thank you. Any other amendments? Hearing none. Clerk, I need a roll call to approve the agenda as amended.
Well, you need a...
I'm sorry. Give...yeah. At this time, give me roll call to amend the agenda.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you. That amendment is on the agenda. At this time, Clerk, I need a roll call to approve the agenda as amended.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
I need a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker, to approve tonight's consent agenda. At this time, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you. Recognition elected officials. Are there any elected officials that would like to be recognized tonight? Elected officials?
On behalf of...
Okay. Yes. You here on behalf of Councilwoman Haley Stevens?
Correct.
Okay.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. For those of you who do not know, my name is Jacqueline Elliott, and I am senior advisor for Congresswoman Haley Stevens. Number one, just wanted to introduce myself. I did leave some pamphlets on the back table here that are constituent services guides. We do offer assistance with federal agencies for casework, so if you have any questions, our phone number and email is on the brochure. Number two, the Congresswoman will be introducing a bill this upcoming Thursday, so I just wanted to flag that for city council. It will be the Stop Nurse Shortages Act. And so obviously, we know that there have been numerous nurse openings across the country with nurses retiring and some leaving the workforce due to stress and other concerns. So the solution for this bill is to ensure we have enough sufficient supply of highly-qualified registered nurses and advanced-practice registered nurses and supporting their accelerated programs. The legislation will be introduced by Congresswoman Stevens as well as David Joyce, and the bill will authorize a $10 million per year grant program allowing nursing schools to create, expand, and/or support an accelerated nursing degree program. Nursing schools will be able to use grants to hire and retain faculty and perceptors, increase the number of clinical training sites, as well as offer financial assistance for students. So I will try, as we continue to introduce legislation and do different things in Washington, I will be sure to come and share those with council. If you all have any questions, again, we do have our brochures on the back table.
All right. Thank you. At this time, any other elected officials? Hearing none. Thank you. At this time, we have agenda address. You have two minutes' time limit to address any items that's on the agenda.
First on the agenda...yeah, first on the agenda address is Dr. Georgia Waterman.
Good evening. Two things on the agenda. One is the item two, which is the council's going to consider whether to add the ballot question about the charter revised charter should be put on the ballot for people. And as you are voting to put it on the ballot, I think people would like to hear what our councilpeople think about the charter revision that's been proposed, but we realize that you can't do that as councilpeople. You can't advocate for ballot provisions. So just may want to make that clear. What you are adopting is for the people to have a chance to vote on it, but we'd like to know whether our councilmembers do support the different initiatives that have been proposed, some of which are quite seismic, and others which were not allowed to be put on the ballot because of the ruling of the Attorney General's office. But the other thing that I wanted to talk about was what you just passed. It's a ballot...I'm sorry. It's a budget amendment, which generally gets put on the general agenda to be discussed. But in this case, it was just put on the consent agenda for, I guess you didn't want it to be...or the administration didn't want you to discuss it. But this is for money, another half million dollars to be taken out of the ARPA fund. You know, I've been pointing to your attention, things that have been taken out of the ARPA COVID relief money. So another half million dollars, and why this was...had to be sneaked through on the consent agenda so it didn't have to be discussed and disclosed to people was kind of peculiar to me, and maybe you'll have some explanation for that. Generally, when you have budget amendments, they go on the agenda so it can be discussed. Consent agenda means it's not taken off and discussed, so it's kind of sneaked on, and I don't know why it has to be done in that instance. So maybe we deserve some explanation.
All right. Thank you. Next on the speaker's list is Mr. Robert Bass.
Good evening. My name is Robert Bass. I live in 499 Highland, Pontiac. I am also the president of Citizen District Council located in District One. I chose number two to speak on this evening because I want to stay consistent. I talked against having a bond put on the ballot for the same reason. I'm suggesting that this does not be put on the ballot for the charter revision. It's not that I'm against the charter revision, simply it was not rolled out in adequate time for everybody to know what's in it. And that's a...that's a very serious document in which to be passing, and I hope that during the time that it's on the ballot, if you all so do so pass it, that they take enough time to let everybody know what's in that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Next on the speaker's list is Mr. Carlton Jones.
Good evening. I have a couple items. I too want to have a good understanding of how we are handling especially these Arbor dollars. I know I've been talking about workforce development for eons, and I really believe it's real important to the city as well as arts and culture, and I think the Arbor dollars were meant to help the city. And I think as much as we can kind of delay that, but we're really putting ourselves in a situation where if we are not proactive with workforce development, funding, it works against us. So I just want to know the process. Is there consideration that possibly the council administration could look at how we could budget for workforce development directly? Because the sooner we do that, the better we'd be. And also, I want to speak to number three. I want to make it clear. Last week, I spoke about this disc golf. As you all know, I'm no shame about it. I'm a golfer. I don't play a lot of disc golf, but I know disc golf is a great sport, and it's a great something for us to have. And so I'm not opposed to the possibility of having to move it. I was just wanting it to be known where we're moving it to. So I just think it needs to be clear that it's a sport that maybe some people don't get into, but I think it's one we do need to continue to have in our city, and everything that we could do to try to maintain and open and expose more people to disc golf, I think could be just like regular golf, that people just don't know enough and don't have enough access to it so they don't participate. So I'm always open to see how we can bring in and be on the forefront of enticing people to come to our city. So no way, form, or fashion, when me questioned it last week, was that I was against the fact of it being moved. I just need to know where we're trying to move it. And I know that Councilwoman James is in part...
Your time is up, sir.
Oh, wait. I didn't see any kind of running the clock. It's not...is the clock working?
I give you another minute.
Okay. I just want to...okay. I just didn't see it running. Yeah. I don't need that, but I just want to say I think Councilwoman James is working really hard to do a whole lot with the aspects of parks and recreation, and I have to commend her because one thing you all see us come down here, we are engaged citizens. And she thought enough to say to me and some others, would you participate in the process with Rec Center? And I commend her for reaching out to get an engaged citizen to want to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and forgive me if I cut you short.
Next on the speaker's list is Ms. Darlene Clark. Last one would be Ms. Gloria Miller. I do have to ask you what item?
About the AARP money, and I want to speak in regards to Ms. Haley Stevens. An associate just came down, so I can speak on that, too. Can I...let me take this mask off. So I want to speak on that as well. As far as the AARP money, look, when we was on council, we left that money hoping that it would be distributed right. Here we are, two and a half years later, still no account for the money. So I don't have much hope for the money. Personally, I feel, just personally myself, I don't think there's none there. From working with administration and being in government over 28 years, this is what I see. Now prove me wrong. Bring that money down here and show me title by title where the money been spent so far and what has it been spent on. If you can do that for me, I'll be the first one to sit down and shut up. As far as the Ms. Haley Stevens associate, I just want to speak on it because I want her to take this back to Ms. Haley Stevens because she works for me as a resident of the city of Pontiac. I just informed her. I did. I took her in the hall, and I wanted to ask her, because I have been calling that office, the three and a half some million dollars that she appropriated for this city. What they're not telling the citizens is that we got $10 million, can't do anything with it. Then we now we got 3.5 or whatever she gave, 3.4 or whatever million, but it hasn't been appropriated. They need to come down and tell the citizens this because right now the mayor's taking the heat from me saying that he has the money. So basically, we got the money, but we don't have the money because the state haven't appropriated yet. And then you on TV, you got pics, you got shots of the governor giving $10 million to the city of Pontiac, and we still got a bridge on Martin Luther King that I'm upset about right now because I bet all over Pontiac this evening trying to get here. This place is a disarray. It is unacceptable. And all I'm saying to Ms. Stevens, all I'm saying to Mr. Moss, to Mr. Tim Greymour, when they get election time, I'm going to remember this because no other city has been done the way city of Pontiac being done right now. No other.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
That concludes agenda address.
Thank you, residents, for those that spoke during the agenda address. At this time, we have a resolution approving the ballot question, shall the 2024 charter proposed by the Pontiac Charter Provision Commission be adopted, being in place on August 6, 2024, primary election ballot.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Goodman. I will now turn it over to Clerk Doyle for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you know, the city of Pontiac voters voted in August of 2021 to approve a charter revision. revision. The Charter Revision Commission had up until three years to revise the city charter. That has what has been occurring over these past few years. It was my understanding that Chairperson Ramsey was supposed to be here, but I do see Charter Commissioners Killian and Yarborough. And they may actually want to speak more in detail about this. But the charter revision first, after they finished their changes, had to be sent to the State Attorney General's Office. The State Attorney General reviewed the charter revision and then had to send it to the governor's office. So there were some changes made, but we got approval from the governor. So before any charter revision can go on the ballot, it must be approved by the governor in that state law. It was approved on April 29th. So the charter revision proposal can go on the ballot, so will be on the ballot on August 6. It's my understanding, but the Charter Commissioners can speak for themselves, that between now and August the 6th, they will have a whole education campaign about what is actually in the charter. So if, through the President, if the two commissioners may be able to speak on.
Please come to the podium. And please introduce yourself for the public.
Good afternoon. Happy Tuesday, everyone. My name is Jose Ibarra.
Honors to everyone, all in the audience and on the council and on TV. I'm Brian Killian Bay, Pontiac Charter Commissioner.
And yes, we are two representatives that were on the Charter Commission, still on there until August 6th, of course. Yes, so with the charter, with the charter revision, you know, first and foremost, the charter hasn't been revised since 1982, correct? So with that, we felt it was necessary to, first and foremost, make it a priority to update the charter to reflect present and future time. So rather this be in a presentation, actually. Okay, so of course, you know, explaining the charter won't, can't be done within this amount of time, nor can it be done within a day or so. However, what can be started is a conversation, which is what I plan, which was, which is what we plan on doing today. So once again, so we updated the charter to have it reflected for President future generations. What does that mean exactly? So with that, we have expanded, first and foremost, we've expanded the voices of the community by adding in opportunities for citizens to be on boards and commissions. More specifically, we've also added people to be on the Election Commission as well. So adding citizens' voices to boards and commissions, revising qualifications for city, for city council as well. And one of the big things that we changed in here is the positioning of the city council seats. How now, first and foremost, there still will be seven council seats. There will be six districts with one at large. The reasoning behind that is because with the old version of the charter, with the seven districts, there was a belief that the seven districts might have formed too many smaller groups to defend, to raise the overall opportunities and whatnot in Pontiac. Adding the at-large council seat that will not only help unite the citizens, but also unite the council people to compromise the things that are needed to be here in Pontiac. As well, we've, another major thing that we've added is the Office of Public Integrity. So with that office, many of us know there are often times where people challenge what we have in our laws here, in which does have to go to legal court, in which case taxpayer dollars are being spent every time we're in, we're in the legal court system. Adding the Office of Public Integrity not only saves us legal costs, but helps keep the, keeps the fraud and corruption internally to investigate it, to be able to present to the city council. It's a much better process to get things that are, that the citizens are concerned about, or even the council people that are concerned about, resolved internally and efficiently and effectively. Other things that we've added, updating, updating just wording. If anybody would like to add on as well.
Also, Commissioner Ramsey, I wish you guys would have asked for a full discussion. We would have put you guys on the agenda for a full discussion for this particular item. But I'm gonna give some leeway.
Oh, thank you. We didn't, we didn't know that, we just thought we were coming down for a full discussion. So we can reschedule that at a later time. Tamika Ramsey, Chair with the Pontiac Revision Commission. I think some of the biggest things that we need to address is that we had three years. The time started before we got on the commission. So the time started from the time the voters approved the wording to approve a revision to the charter. We didn't, and that was in November. We didn't get elected until May of the following year. So we didn't know that we no longer had that time. So we, once we found out, we had to make some very difficult decisions and just really hammered down specific things that we felt needed to be changed. And so this hasn't, this wasn't a full revision of the charter. It was addressing some issues that we thought and saw over the last 10 to 15 years that needed to be addressed. The one-at-large position was really important to me as a lifelong Pontiac resident. I have lived on every side of town except the south side. And there are times when my city council person had a full-time job as a teacher and was not available during the day. So I called one of the people who were available. It puts a lot of strain on individuals who don't have full-time jobs or who have more flexible jobs. So what we hope is that the six districts with the one-at-large, the one-at-large would be able to handle things during the day when other people may be at work, but also going directly to that individual who's over that district to talk about some of the things. There are also times where council people up there make decisions outside of their district and people have pushback. So having one person who was at-large to be a part of that discussion and be able to speak for the entire city. We like to think that what happens on one side of town doesn't bother another side, but it does, right? So we need to be able to have those conversations. As the clerk mentioned, as my colleague mentioned, we are doing education and outreach. We did not want to talk about it until it was approved by the governor, which just happened. And now we will come to all the district meetings. We will come to all the community meetings. We will schedule meetings with people, whoever wants to, us to sit down and talk and go over this charter. We are willing to do that because it is something that we all believe in. Thank you.
All right. Don't sit down.
Oh, I'm gonna just stand back.
Don't sit down. I'll open up the discussion. Council, have any questions? Councilman Nicholson.
So Commissioner Ramsey, I, from what I hear, I understand that the time clock was a bit confusing and not exactly what we had hoped for or understood. There are some key points that you pointed out that are important that we need to address, but I'm concerned that we didn't have enough time. So are you saying that, are you, are you asking us to approve? I want to know because I wholeheartedly believe in the work that you do. I know that you don't do anything halfway.
Thank you for saying that.
My vote is with my confidence in your work and what I've read, sounds and looks very together. I don't want you to discredit the work, babe.
Thank you. So we made very specific changes. We did not, well, we went through the whole thing, but we did not change the form of government, right? We didn't say this needs to be a weak mayor form. We left some of those constitutional things the same so that we can focus on an integrity officer that I believe everybody in this city believes we need, to focus on making sure that people are heard, no matter who their council people are. So I am voting yes. I am going to ask other people to vote yes on the charter revision.
Well, you cannot say you're voting yes on it.
Well, he asked me.
Well, I understand, but-
I, I'm asking if what you're-
I, I would.
What, if you are, if you are saying that you feel that you guys have done the work of, okay.
Yes.
I want to agree because you're going to end up hearing my vote anyway. I don't want the public to feel like there is more that could be done, but what needed to be done, from what I have read, has been addressed. We're not, we've talked about how old the charter has been, how out of date, how inappropriate some of the language is. I want to make it very clear, from what I've read, those issues have been addressed. There are key points, as you mentioned, that were addressed. I don't feel it has gone out of reach. I don't think it's gone out of bounds. I do think that there's more that can be done and can be done in the future. I just want to make sure that people know that this Charter Commission did enough work and did what they had and could possibly do within the time constraints that were available.
Thank you very much. We did that. And a lot of it was changing shat from will to shall. It is, this is not an option. You have to do this. And that is for accountability and transparency for the residents.
Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Any other council, Councilwoman James?
I have one question in regards to the change in district seats from, well, we still have seven, but now, will this require a redistricting of all of the districts? And if so, will that be done before or after the voters vote on this? And I guess either Tamika or possibly even the clerk can answer that.
Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the redistricting will actually be done by the clerk's office, but the council will vote on those new districts. So we will more than likely present you with a couple of different scenarios, and then ultimately, the council will decide. This new charter, as it relates to the composition of the city council, will not go into effect until the next city council election. So I think that answers your question.
Councilwoman James, any follow-up questions?
I think that's, that's it.
Councilman Goodman.
I'm not going to comment really too deeply on like the charter itself, other than saying, I believe it is our job to give this to the voters, to have them have their opinion. They voted for a charter commission, they voted to change it. You guys have been doing your job. I've seen it, I've watched, I've read through it. And to Councilman Nicholson's point, you have been very pointed in trying to address some very critical issues that we've seen come to light in the past 10 years, really the last four years, especially prior to us. But I am really trying to just drive home the fact that like, besides how we personally may feel about some of the charter changes on council, this is a decision for the voters to make. Like while we may be able to have this vote, we also have a vote in the ballot box, and I don't want us to overstep our boundaries because I very much fall on the line of this is a citizen's decision. So regardless of how you feel, I believe that is where this needs to be done.
Well, thank you. I don't think we've ever said anything to the contrary.
Oh, not you.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's on record.
Please come back to the floor before you speak.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the council? And thank you, guys, for the work that you have done on this particular charter revision. The decision of the council this night is not to vote on the merits of the charter revision, is to put it into the voters' hands to make that decision, whether we disagree with it or not. So that's not what we're here to vote on. So I just want to make sure we understand what we voted on tonight. So I definitely agree that it should go to the voters, let the voters decide. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we already have a motion and a second. Clerk Doyle, could you have roll call, please?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle, the citizens who had the opportunity to vote on the new charter revision. Thank you. At this time, city council resolution, residents approving relocation of Hawthorne Park, disc golf course. This was postponed from April the 30th, 2024. City council meeting, we already had a motion and a second to approve this resolution last week, so we don't need another one this week. So I'll return it over to Mayor Grimal for context.
Yeah, thank you, President Protam. I know that this resolution was brought forward specifically by Councilwoman James, and so I don't want to steal her thunder, but I will just note that the park that is now called Pontiac Oaks, that most of us still refer to as Hawthorne Park, has had a disc golf course in it that occupies the vast majority of space in the park. And that park is now being managed on a day-to-day basis by the County Parks Commission, and it's still owned, of course, by the city. The County Parks Commission does not want to make any changes there without approval of the city. But that disc golf course has really occupied so much land out there that it has prevented or will prevent a lot of the plans that the Oakland County Parks Commission is putting together. And I understand that that is what motivated Councilwoman James to bring this resolution forward so that the County Parks Commission can have the opportunity to relocate the disc golf course to another parcel and begin moving forward with their planning for Hawthorne Park, Pontiac Oaks Park.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. At this time, Councilwoman James, since I know that you was working hand-in-hand with the county on this particular resolution.
Yes. Mr. President Protam, I request having this particular resolution table for the time being because Chris Ward and I, the Director of Parks and Rec at Oakland County, have spoken. They have met with this, this disc golf organization and are in the process of working through the details of this transition of them relocating the disc golf course. And so we're, he's confident that they will be able to work out a resolution. So what I'd like to do is to see us table this for the time being until that resolution is set, and then we can come back with that, with what they have already agreed to.
All right. So we can make, you can make a motion to indefinitely-
I support. And I thank my colleague.
I make a motion then that we table this for the time being.
For their thoughtful-
Yes. Okay. Our motions are made by Councilwoman James, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to remove this item indefinitely, and we can bring it back at a later date.
Yes.
Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Thank you that, that resolution passes. At this time, that motion passes. At this time, Department of Public Works, resolution approving appointment of Mark Ragsdale as DPW Director. I need a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
Support. Or I'll make the motion, support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, supported by Goodman. I will now turn it over to Mayor Grimal for context.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I understand that there may be some interest on the part of the city council to postpone voting on this until the two members who weren't able to be here this evening are able to be here, and that's okay. But I did want to at least have the opportunity to talk a little bit about the candidate and to introduce him to those council members who are present here tonight. Mark Ragsdale is an exceptionally well-qualified candidate for DPW Director. There are a few things that I want to highlight about him. Number one, he started out as a laborer at the most basic level of a DPW department and has worked in just about every possible capacity in a typical DPW department. So he really understands the ins and outs of DPW departments. He ultimately went back to school. He came out and started with the DPW department without having gone to college. He ultimately went back to college and got a bachelor's degree in community development with a concentration in public administration, and then got a master's degree in public administration. And he did that specifically so that he could continue his advancement in DPW departments. Since getting those degrees, he has served as the DPW Director of three different DPW departments over many years. And so there is literally nobody who I can think of as being more qualified, as having worked in every possible- as having worked in every possible role of DPW departments, having served as the DPW Director in three different communities, and not only having a bachelor's and a master's degree in applicable fields, but actually excelling during those degrees. He had a 3.97 GPA when he got his masters, excuse me, when he got his bachelor's degree, and a 3.86 GPA when he received his master's degree. I also want to note that he's someone who really values diversity, and he, in fact, has a certificate from the University of South Florida specifically in diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace. So, with that, I want to allow our candidate to say a few words, and then certainly, I welcome any questions that council members may have for him.
Actually, Mayor Grammer first want to allow the council to speak.
Councilman Nicholson.
Welcome, and I'm, thank you, Mayor. I think you are very clearly, very passionate, and that was, your resume speaks for itself. I'm excited about your candidacy. I apologize that I have not been able to have you present at a subcommittee meeting for Personnel and Finance. We will be rescheduling that meeting because there's a budget hearing that coincides. So, I'm not sure exactly yet when my colleagues will be able to find some time to maneuver it, but it'll probably be within the week or the beginning of the week, next week. I do think that department heads should be vetted in a public setting, not just here, but probably in the subcommittee, so we can meet you, especially this department. Because this department, as you're very aware, reaches the depths of everything. It is probably the thing on our agenda that comes up the most and is most debated. And Councilwoman James, I'm lucky to have her on the Personnel Committee because she is also the Chair of the DPW Subcommittee that deals with everything that you're going to touch. I think my interest, and I'd love to hear the mayor's feedback. My question, though, and I, because I, we can't possibly hold up any work, is this a permanent appointment? And is there an interim ability for you to, as in your authority, be able to have this person in place, and the council then ratifies?
You got a floor, Mayor Grammer.
Yeah, this is a permanent appointment. We are recommending that Mark be hired on a permanent basis to permanently fill the role of DPW Director. We do have a consultant who started, I guess it's two weeks ago now, who we anticipate helping out with things, and that's someone who is well-known to at least some of the city council members who have previously served on the school board. His name is Robert England, and we anticipate that he will be able to help not just with the transition up until a permanent DPW Director starts, but also help with the transition as needed beyond that date. His contract is not for a term certain, but is on an as-needed basis up to the maximum amount of time of a year. But, yeah, we think that having a DPW Director, a permanent DPW Director, sooner rather than later is important, and it hasn't been an easy job market to find a high-quality DPW Director. I think we're very fortunate to have someone who's so interested in this position, who comes with a really impressive resume. We certainly don't have any objection to vetting people through the Personnel and Finance Subcommittee. We have talked with city council leadership, and they had not brought that up, but we certainly don't have any objection to that. But we do have a really, truly exceptional candidate who we would strongly recommend.
Thank you, Mayor Grammer. Councilman, you have the floor.
I, I hear you, and as the Chair of that committee and HR professional for, for, I know it's, it's, we've lost too many candidates to a week. A week can be, and you can't really fully understand how tight this job market is right now, especially municipalities. I myself would be nervous to lose this potential, very qualified candidate. So, I'd urge my, in that, in that capacity, I would urge my colleagues to consider moving forward with this appointment.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you.
Any, any other, Councilman James?
Yeah, I think I agree with Councilman Nicholson. I do think that any action on our part tonight to try to move this would be contradictory to our position that we are putting in our agenda. Is there, is this position filled? And we've got a list of positions that we are asking administration every week, is this position filled? And tonight, they bring us a, well, state-of-the-art candidate, and I am prepared to accept his, this position, to approve him for this position tonight because I don't see any reason for it to be delayed, unless somebody can explain to me, you know, what the reason is. I really don't understand. It, to me, it's a total contradiction to what we have said, that it's, we prioritize these positions being filled.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. Actually, early today, I notified the administration not to have a candidate come tonight due to me receiving concern from a few council people concerning this appointment. They wanted more time to vet information concerning this particular candidate. So, first, I want to apologize, you do, sir, for you coming out tonight because basically, my concern is to make sure that I'm fair to the candidate and fair to the council all in the same, all in the same, at the same time. So, two council people have definitely stated where you stand tonight, but several council members have stated the opposite of where you stand. So, I do not want to move with the vote. I would rather postpone this to next week so we can have a full council here to have a fair, make a fair decision on this particular candidate. Councilman Goodman.
And to both, well, more specifically to you and to my colleague, I have had a chance to read your resume, so please do not take my request to postpone for a week as anything towards you individually. It is solely because multiple times on this council, we have made different conversations about procedure and how we would like to go about things within our decision-making process and how we respond to the questions and responses and pushback of other council members. So, this is to make sure that we have our due diligence to be able to go over this and put someone in position because we've had trouble with people becoming directors and us not keeping them long-term. And not saying that that is you, but I want the city and the council to be able to do its due diligence in making this decision. And this is nothing towards you individually as a candidate.
Thank you, Councilman Goodman. Any other, Councilman Parker, any concerns?
Thank you, sir. As it has been so eloquently put, I think one of the things that everyone has said is we certainly want the other two of our councils to be here to also have their input in this selection. Certainly, we wanted to make sure that all the background information that someone may be seeking and looking for is reviewed and accepted. So, if we, so I'm ready to vote.
All right, thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor, I know you had your hand up.
Thank you, Council, President Protam. I just wanted to note that we did, in fact, reach out to the candidate when we received your information. We just passed, we missed each other with voicemail.
All right, thank you. At this, Councilman Goodman.
Well, given that the candidate is here, I don't believe you've had a chance to speak yet. So, I would like to give the candidate a chance to speak for the trip all the way out here to at least have us be able to hear from him.
I just didn't want him to do it two times, and, but we can. We can have him here.
It is up to you. I do want to be able to at least afford you the ability since you have come all the way out, but it is truly up to you.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Clerk, and Members of City Council. I appreciate the kind words, Mr. Mayor, in my, displaying my background. My name is Mark Ragsdale. I am a 32-year veteran public service employee. As the mayor said, I have a master's in public administration, bachelor's in community development. I'm a three-year graduate of Michigan Public Service Institute, a eight-year graduate of Midwest Advanced Public Service Institute. I possess an S1 water distribution license through the state of Michigan. I have a Class A CDL with tanker and air brakes endorsement. I started my career as a laborer and worked my way up. And I worked for the Charter Township of Brownstown for 22 years, and I decided if I wanted to make it to the top, I had to go back to school, and that's exactly what I did. And I went back to school, got my bachelor's, got my master's. And then I became the Director of Public Works for the city of Hamtramck, and it's there where I did my best work because at the city of Hamtramck, I was able to rebuild a DPW from the ground up, exactly what would make me the best candidate for this position. The same emergency financial manager that came in and leveled this place did the same thing at Hamtramck. Sold off the DPW garage, sold all the equipment, laid the employees off. When I got there, there was two outside employees and two inside employees. And I hired part-timers and moved them up to full-time, trained them myself, and purchased equipment, rented a building in Detroit because there was no place in Hamtramck to hold our DPW. And they still use that garage today, and they're thriving. And Hamtramck is turning things around. I was able to save the city millions of dollars by, instead of farming things out, bringing it back in and doing it in-house where we had a better control over it. I'm a father to a proud, or I'm a proud father to a daughter who is getting ready to graduate medical school. She's going to be a physician assistant. She graduates in August. I have a lovely girlfriend that I hope to make my wife soon that is with me here this evening. And I'm, like I said, I'm a 32-year career veteran employee, and I look forward to the challenge, but I think I offer the tools needed to get the job done. And I welcome any questions that any of you may have.
All right, thank you, sir. I definitely have read your resume as well. So, again, council have any follow-up questions? Councilman Goodman.
Just a comment before we vote. Again, I want to say thank you for saying all that. As someone who organized in the area and has been to the city of Hamtramck, obviously, long after you've been there, but have had friends on, Hamtramck City Council, I hear no complaints about how the city is running. So, I, you know, it's very much a testament to your work, especially given the similarities between Pontiac and Hamtramck in terms of coming out of emergency management and so on, so forth. So, again, I do want to really just hammer home that this is nothing about your resume or the experience that you offer because based on hearing all of that, I would be more than happy to have you here if you're also able to do that here. But this is truly about procedure and trying to be fair to not only council, but the people of Pontiac.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Hearing our closed discussion, sir, thank you for giving us your time tonight.
Pleasure.
And at this time, can I get a motion for postponement?
Make a motion to postpone for one week?
It's been moved, it's been moved by Councilman Nichol, I mean, not Nicholson, Goodman, second by Councilman Parker to postpone this item for one week. At this time, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
No.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Three yays, two nays.
The motion fails?
The motion fails. Roll, a roll call for approving this candidate. Clerk Doyle, explain.
Since it's a motion, you're just, it's my understanding that it's fine since it's a motion. It's not a resolution or an ordinance, but we can get the city attorney if she's available here.
Deputy Mayor, on this thing.
I feel like if we read for Robert's.
It's the majority of who's here.
Hey, Councilman, please don't, don't leave at this moment because we need to, we need to, we need to move. City Attorney is on our way.
Good evening, Council. I'm so sorry to put this out there. I procedurally would like to change my vote. I'd like to withdraw. I do believe that it is better. I don't want, clearly, where people's, my intent to make it public, my intent is that I don't, I want it to be on record that I don't want to slow down the hiring of a very qualified, a perfectly qualified candidate. However, I have two colleagues that are intimately involved in this area, specifically Councilwoman Rothford. I want her to be involved. I want her to have her say, but I also don't want the public to think that I am, and I don't want this candidate, who I think is perfectly qualified, and I highly doubt my colleague is going to disagree. I hope they don't. However, if I, if my vote remains and we reject this candidate, procedurally, it's not, it's not clean. So, I would like to, Clerk, request guidance from you as how I withdraw and change my yay or my nay.
Since we're in the same, we can do a motion to reconsider, right?
Clerk, Council President Protam, I would like to make a motion to reconsider motion, the, the, motion to. No, that would be, yeah, the motion was postponed. I would like to reconsider.
All right, thank you. A motion is then made by Councilman Nicholson to reconsider the postponement.
With disdain. I just, I just want to make sure that it's clear that I.
Can I get a second?
Not.
For the President? Before we vote, since we waited for her to get here, should we not hear from the lawyer?
I just want to make sure since she's here. Councilman Parker, if he's going to remove his vote.
The motion's on the table, and I, I'm very sorry, City Attorney, that I.
It's no problem.
Yes. The motion's on the floor. Can I get a second?
Support.
All right. The motion, it's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Goodman to reconsider, to postpone, postponement for one week. Roll call.
James?
No.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Four yays, one nay.
All right, thank you. That motion passed. We reconsider this particular appointment next week.
But what I did want to talk about was, once again, the issue I brought up about putting something through the consent agenda without consideration, without discussion, a budget amendment, and particularly because it affects the ARPA funds. And as you know, I've continued to be involved in some of the projects that would benefit the citizens of Pontiac so much. And one of those was the ARPA funds because that was COVID relief dollars that should be used for the community building. And one of those projects was the homeowners' repair funds, which, as you see, has not been, much has happened with that. And there's a lot of people who are eligible who are still waiting to see if they can't get a chance to do some home repairs. And the other thing is, as that's still kind of unresolved, we now have the Small Business Program, which is similarly in such a confused flux right now. When we were waiting to see what was going to be the choice of the Economic Development Department of Grants and Philanthropy in terms of getting these small business grants and technical assistance to our many small businesses in town. And that had been announced in December with awards in January. And when in March, we hadn't heard anything, I came to council and I said, "Council, can you please find out what's happening with that?" So we understood that a few days later, some of the awardees did get a letter, and it was kind of confusing in terms of the directions. And so as I've been trying to get answers to move this along so we can put some grant money in the hands of small businesses who sorely could use it at this time, a good use of our ARPA money, that the, it continues to get more confused. In fact, the latest, when I went down and talked to somebody in Economic Development, Monday, as late as Monday, they said that all the directions that had been given at first were improper, that they're going to have to redo all the assessments that had been done, that we, the technical assistant experts, seven of them had backed out already. So here we are on something that should be a program that's a great benefit to so many of our small businesses who are waiting to have part of that. And yet, you know, this is, this is getting very confused again. And then we hear that the actual grants and loans for small businesses is supposed to start June 1st, but it was dependent on the small business technical assistance being completed. And as you see, we don't even know if that's going to be completed yet. So how are you going to start another program, June 1st or June 17th? It depends on who you talk to, a different date. So before council, before you keep taking more money out of ARPA funds, as you did today, for programs that nobody has any idea how they're going to be spent, can you please take time to look and see how your ARPA money is being handled, how the programs are being explained, and get those back on track? Because there's a lot of people who, who should be eligible to get those funds for which they were intended, for which we fought so hard. And I asked you, council, to take a closer look at that before you move forward. Last year, I had to warn you not to take the 10 million, not to let the mayor take 10 million dollars out. This year, I'm going to have to come back.
That concludes your time, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Robert Bass.
Good evening again. My name is Robert Bass, President of Chicago. I'm going to try to be brief, but I do want to stay on the focus of the charter revision. And Mr. Jose and Mr. Bay did attend the CDC's meeting and gave us a brilliant presentation about the charter revision and the things that they've done to it and made changes and was creative in doing some of the things that's in the charter. And that's why this is a very temperamental document to me. It could, it could either change the balance or upset the balance or make it better. And I've explained that because I'm not against whatever the people choose us. However, this document is not to be played with. It's a serious document that leads us in how we run our city and how we, how we operate our city. So I want it to be driven by those that wanted to make the changes and explain to the people exactly what's in all of these pages. Because bottom line is, with changes and creation, it costs more, there's more cost factors. And with all of these add-ons, that's going to change the budget for the, for the administration as well as the budget for the council. And do the people want to afford that budget? We can't afford to have a few people come out and vote on that day because they understand it, but a multitude of others don't. And we pass some that we're going to have to live with. That's why I think it's very important that we educate and educate properly. That means that, that no fault of theirs, they weren't able to get it out before they sent it to the state. And that was my objection tonight, is because they could not do it. It wasn't their fault that they couldn't do it. It was a misunderstanding that caused them not to have to delay. But we did not get to see what was in it before it went to the state for approval. And that's my problem with it. But at any rate, it's going to be up to the voters. I hope that even council, everybody that says they support it, make sure they read it and understand it clearly. Because this is not nothing that I feel after all of my years, because I've seen the challenge by lawyers. They tried to challenge it on both sides, from the council side and for the administrative side. And they failed because it stood the test of time. It couldn't be broken when it went to court. It had to go one way or the other, and it did. So you can say it's old or whatever, but right now, it stood the test of time because it's been challenged a number of times and stood up. So I just hope this one will stand up if it's passed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Next on the speakers list is Mr. Jacob Walker.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jacob Walker. I'm with DTE Energy. And I came tonight to invite everybody out on May 16th to come to Bowen's Activity Senior Center for an open house that we're having here in Pontiac. First of all, I want to thank all the council members who've allowed me to come to their district meetings and, and share this information. I see a lot of familiar faces in the room. Thank you for allowing me to be here and invite everyone out. We're going to be talking about the investments that we're making here in Pontiac to improve service, our four-point plan, and also customer programs that can help customers save money on their bill. So I talked to the, to the leaders over at Bowen Center, and I had an idea of how we should show up. And the ladies quickly corrected me and told me how we should show up. So we will have food provided and other resources needed there. And I just, I said that because I want folks to know that I'm listening to what's happening here in Pontiac and responding in kind. And so I appreciate you guys extending your hand to me and embracing me on behalf of DTE. And my, my goal is to return that to you in kind as well. So May 16th, I'll leave some flyers here in the back. There'll be tables set up, just like an old-school open house, where you can ask questions about programs, talk to folks, the experts on site. Any questions you have will be addressed. So thank you for your time again, and thank you to Pontiac and the leadership here for embracing me and allowing me for the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hey, please.
I'm sorry, just, it was a question for the.
No, no, I'm sorry. We can get that information out. We'll get it to you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Next on the speakers list is Ms. Rosalynn Rothfrost.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and audience. I'm still here on behalf of the residents who live adjacent to M1 concourse. With the weather warming, there has been an uptick in the activity at M1, and the residents who live nearby are experiencing noise. And the noise is not pleasant, and we want to have some relief. The neighborhood adjacent to M1 is in a real David and Goliath situation. M1 concourse is a multimillion-dollar complex whose current expansion, just the expansion now, is $20 million. We suggest that the city needs an effective monitoring and enforcement plan that will result in the noise from M1 being reduced to legal levels, just legal levels. Against this Goliath, we strongly recommend that if the city is going to protect the well-being of citizens in the areas adjacent to M1 concourse from the impact of the noise from M1 concourse, that the services of sound experts be secured to help the city develop an effective monitoring plan. In 2016, the concourse opened, and each year, residents have complained. And we don't have an effective monitoring plan. We don't have experts who are city employees. We have city employees who are code enforcement and who do their job, but they need help. We want M1 to be a better neighbor, and we want you to help them become a better neighbor. All we want is the noise reduced. So please support code enforcement by providing the resources that they need, the, an expert who can consult with them and help them develop a more effective plan, the personnel to actually do the monitoring, and the equipment that they need and the training that they need. If we can do that, then we can, we can have a plan that identifies where the noise is that's affecting people, how loud it is, how long it is, how long it exists, and then that can be used for enforcement purposes. So please, help the residents have a peaceful summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Lucretia Fair. Did I say your first name correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lucretia Fair, and I'm actually here speaking on behalf of my daughter, Marky McLean. She's a resident of the Phoenix Place Apartments across the street. And I was here last week, and it was on the agenda, Phoenix Place Apartments. It is deplorable. My daughter has been living in that apartment building for nine years now, and I have watched that building go from a place that I was comfortable with my only child, living with a physical disability, living on her own, her very first apartment. I was proud of it. Now, I, when I drive my daughter off, she does not drive. So I am her pretty much means of transportation. When I drop my daughter off now at home, I sit in the parking lot and I wait until she gets inside her unit, texts me and tells me she's in before I leave. I feel it is unsafe. The living conditions over there is horrible. My daughter has lived this past winter with no heat. She has put in over 20 work orders. I myself has told her, "Marky, let me go down there, I'll handle it." But she, "No, Mom, no, Mom," because she's scared of the repercussion. And I told her, "There is no repercussion." Currently, her rent is being paid over here in escrow, so I'm happy about that. Maintenance or whatever worker it was came to her unit three times this past winter, and they checked and they said, "It's the motor. No one came out." My daughter, she has a fixed income. Her utility, her DTE bill, went from an average of $25 to $40 a month to $150 a month because she's been running space heaters all winter and turning on her electric stove for heat. Again, I'm like, "Marky, I'll go down there, I'll handle it." But she's like, "No, Mom, no, Mom." So it took a point for me, it broke my heart, but I had to step back and say, "Okay, I'm not going to be here forever to fight your battles for you. You have to open your mouth." But I'm tired of sitting here, closed mouth, and my daughter living like that. I pull up over there, and I can see the homelessness, the drug addicts, I can see who the drug dealers is. The Oakland County Sheriff is over there numerous times a day per week, I see them. If I can see, as a resident, who the drug addicts is and who the drug dealers are hanging out in the lobby and in the parking lot while they can't see it. All I'm just asking is if someone can move on this. I've offered my daughter numerous times, "Baby, you don't have to live like that. You can come back home." But as a young lady, she takes pride of living on her own, and I'm glad that she has that. I know my time is up. I thank you.
Well, thank you. And usually, we don't go, we don't talk to the podium, but I know you can talk to Councilman Parker after this meeting. And he'll talk to you about your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I came today, Laurie Bishop, I came today to talk about a festival that was to be held in Pontiac, and the promoter didn't get his paperwork in in time. And I wanted to state that when we're working with people and we're trying to coordinate events, we sometimes have to put all our bullets in the gun before we can pull the trigger. And sometimes we have to work with people to allow things to happen. And this is not the first time that events have been taken out of Pontiac because of paperwork. And I want to know if we could please consider putting up another rule for people who want to have festivals and don't have two months to plan it or have, you know, so that we can not disenfranchise people. Blair has been a big promoter of Pontiac. He has brought a lot of people. He has been one of the businesses that have survived downtown amongst the parking issues and the, all the other issues that are down there, being held with the dispensaries and it's like a foot on their windpipe down there. He's a family business. He is trying to make money for his family. And we need to learn to work with people so that we can make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Marcus Bowman.
How y'all doing? Been a long time. Haven't seen you. But I tune in every week. So first off, I want to say shout-out to everybody that come here every week fighting for this community. I love it. It inspires me. And even though I haven't been present in the physical, I've been here in the spirit. So first off, I want to start off by saying I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, nor am I here to complain, because that's what I'm tired of. I'm here to promote solutions for all of these issues based off of creative thinking and logical thinking, which it seems to be the administration has no idea on what to do. That's just being clear. So what I'm offering to the community is, myself as proxy, as a gladiator, as well as others who feel the same way, and anybody in this venue at this point, and those who are at home who feel the same way, to come together, not excluding the council, because you all are part of this community as well, too. But it's clear and evident that no one had experience prior to being in those seats. So we all need help, and we all need to help each other move this thing forward. Because the direction that we're going right now is going to be, excuse my language, damning for our future and for our children. And because I got skin in the game, I'm willing to fight tooth and nail for that. I hope that somebody in here is willing to fight with me for it as well, too.
Next is Mr. Marcus Bowman.
How y'all doing? Been a long time. Haven't seen you. But I tune in every week, so, um, first off, I want to say shout out to everybody that come here every week, um, fighting for this community. I, I love it. It inspires me. And even though I haven't been present in the physical, I've been here in the spirit. So, um, first off, I want to start off by saying I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, nor am I here to complain, because that's what I'm tired of. I'm here to promote solutions for all of these issues based off of creative thinking and logical thinking, which it seems to be the administration has no idea on what to do. That's just being clear. So what I'm offering to the community is, um, myself as proxy, as a gladiator, as well as others who feel the same way, and anybody in this venue at this point, and those who are at home who feel the same way, to come together, not excluding the council, because you all are part of this community as well too. But it's clear and evident that no one had experience prior to being in those seats. So we all need help, and we all need to help each other move this thing forward. Because the direction that we're going right now is going to be, excuse my language, damning for our future and for our children. And because I got skin in the game, I'm willing to fight tooth and nail for that. I hope that somebody in here is willing to fight with me for it as well too. Um, it's atrocious that when you walk downtown, and I live literally five minutes from downtown. I walk my dog. I take walks with my wife, and there's nothing to do. I blame that on the administration, because business owners are getting chewed out. The last discussion that I had with a business owner that talked to me, they told me venting as just, in a way of, of very, very angry. They said that this administration told them to shut their business down. Anybody in here who's an entrepreneur and has to make money and get up every day and make it for yourself, you understand how important it is to keep those doors open. So what I'm saying is there is no creative thinking on the other side of the table. I'm willing to be a proxy to help and give solutions to these problems and these issues based off my experience, my knowledge, and as well as bringing everybody to the table. Because at some point, you all have to realize, we got to let some air out of this tire it was going to blow. And that's just being completely frank and playing with it. This is not a political agenda. I have no care about what anybody is doing with their political career, but what I do care about is the fact that there is no community in Pontiac anymore. And that's what I am used to. That's what I was raised on in this community. I spent half my life, more than half my life, in this community. I'm 42 years old. I moved out here when I was 19. So forgive me if I wasn't born and raised, but if you can't tell me I don't have no stock in this community, I wouldn't be here on this podium right now. So what I'm saying is to everybody in this community, if you want to find solutions and bring great ideas, we're creating a think tank, and my number is 248-843-3172. Again, 248-843-3172. And I can facilitate a venue for us to make this thing happen. You all have a great night.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Next on the speakers list is Mr. Carlton Jones.
Marcus, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I commend you. I commend you. Uh, what I want to say, we are, we are engaging community. And I can feel what he's saying. And somehow or another, we've kind of lost our way because people, and I wanted to say to people who have been encouraging me, you guys know, a lot of times, when I'm leaving here, I have several people say, "Carlton, we really appreciate what you're saying and doing." It just seemed like council, administration is not listening. Not so much you agree, but you don't even respond. So when people come here and you don't respond to us, it's not a connection. And it's not that we're trying to come and complain. We want to be an engaged community, and we are. So somehow or another, administration, deputy mayor, we've got to get some response. We don't come here just for our health. We come here because, just like the young man was saying, we trying to come here and see how we can do good. I'm a witness. There is a lot of power in this room before people come down here, but we're not engaging. Administration is not engaging. I commend the Councilwoman James, because she called me up and said, "Carlton, I want you to be a part of this with something we get started." I commend you for that. And I'm not saying it's just me. We got other people here in our community. We all have to be engaging. You all know, I've been on workforce development. Now, I don't think everybody understand that. I really don't. But whoever was talking about how we retain people in the market right now, that is workforce development. I'm gonna tell you, we can go out and get people with great resumes. They in high demand. They come here with a lot of missing pieces. I guarantee you, they might not stay long. And we know that. You can go through a whole bunch of vetting, but those people are in high demand. We have to find ways. What my sister Gloria here was talking about that bridge, because you don't hear me say something, I'm very much concerned about that. What Mr. Bass was talking about that charter, I'm very much concerned about that too, because that's something we all have to buy into. So if we sit here and don't take this message that we as public are putting out, that's a missing piece. So I understand what the young man is saying. How can we come together? And that's what I'm really all about. But I want to say, the piece that Haley Stevens brought to the table, that's workforce development. She says it's a missing hole for nurses, so they trying to fund it. So what have we done in Pontiac to try to fund workforce development by itself, especially with Arbor dollars? If we ain't done that, we missing a boat, because there's so much going on right now. If we don't develop our people, they will never be in the position to take advantage of opportunity and move us up to economic scale. The biggest issue we got is the economics of everybody's household. The way you do that, it's been proven by the state and the county, is post-secondary education, which takes time to increase their level of income. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon, um, council, administration, and to the people. What I was going to talk about, um, I, actually, what I was going to speak on tonight was about the gurds, but since the mayor isn't at his seat right now, he's addressing another issue. And I'm one person who like to confront the person I accuse things of, okay? So I won't address that tonight, so public, please forgive me for that. But what I will address to you, let's do an update, as we call in a lot of our old minds. Let's do an update of our checkoff list. The city of Pontiac, right now, today, we have council people. Are they listening to the people? They say they are. We say they're not. We at the state where we got a mayor who does not listen to us. We at the state where we got a deputy mayor who, who can't answer the questions, especially very important questions, without getting back to someone. And then we have the audience and the residents complaining about, which in fairness is good to hear. You have avenues, you got the bridge closed off. You got Martin Luther King Boulevard closed off for confusion. You got Franklin Road closed off. You got Golf Drive closed off. Oh my God. Construction is good. I come from a construction family. It's good if it's organized. It's not organized because you got people going the wrong way on the streets. And again, I didn't come here to talk about this. I actually come to talk about the gurds, so let me re-infrash your memory. But then you got people going up and down the wrong streets, trying to get through. You got people not going, not knowing which way to go. You got MLAMs and police departments trying to find an avenue to get to a street that's right there, but they can't get to. Pontiac, you got workforce development sitting here begging. You got M1 making noise. Let's guess this is the report card. If you can't hear all of this, I really think you don't, well, I don't think you care anymore, but that's personal. But your actions showed us you really don't care. But in the world where I come from, in my imagination, no, it's not my imagination. In the reality world that I live in, we call that gentrification. When a young mother, because let me tell you this. My child live in implorable conditions, and everyone who live in Pontiac, no, Phoenix Center, Lancaster, and all of them are implorable conditions. They should not have to live like that. I don't want a dog, and I'm not a pet person, to live like that. And my child, if you had have came up in a town where all, like Carlton said, we came together, we pulled together, we ate together. This city has been divided, not just by the people who supposed to represent Pontiac, which is our council, but your mayor has allowed the council, you follow his lead. You don't have your own dreams and your own visions for Pontiac. You don't, no, I say that sincerely, because I can. You don't have to agree with me, but you got to listen. Do you understand what I'm saying? And you don't have to look, "Oh, hey, I was here before you." Again, this is what you call gentrification. And Nicholson, let me tell you this. You don't even come to the council meeting to sit in the chair. This is the first day.
Order, 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 order. Order, order.
So that does conclude your time.
Please, please. Let's be respectful. Let's.
Council, Councilman Nicholson.
I understand, I understand.
I'm, okay, okay.
Please excuse.
Yeah, I'll excuse you.
Next person on the speakers list is Ms. Gloria Miller.
Before you start to call, let me get myself together.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay.
You know, I want to say something first before I start. These last two or three months, I've been going to funeral, to funeral, to funeral. And you know, death makes, it changes you, it's supposed to, you know? Because I see a lot of people around me dying. They dying. And when I come down here, sometimes I don't even want to come, but I can't. I can't, because God said, "You gotta keep speaking the word." I'm not down here to make any friends. I'm down here for the people to tell the truth. Because when I die and you come to my funeral, first of all, if you don't like me, don't come. I'm telling you right now, don't come. Don't even come. I ain't got time for no fake stuff. I wouldn't fake living. I'm not going to be fake. I probably raise up. Don't come. All I need is God. I play that all the time. Your daughter shouldn't have to live like that. The city is in an uproar. It's just like my house. If I don't control it, somebody else is going to control it. The administration is the guide, okay? Come on now. The, the council, you are a check and balance. You don't do what the mayor tell you to do. Guess what? You guys can shut him down if you want to for the citizens of Pontiac. Because that's what we had to do when I was on council on a lot of issue, shut him down. It's not personal. It's just getting the job done. This, you know, for a council person to get up out of his seat and go home. Eastside, y'all know what I want to say. I know y'all thinking that out there. This is Pontiac. This is how we do it. You got to have balls to sit in that chair. You got to know why you were elected to get in that chair. You take it seriously to be in that chair. When I was in that seat, even out of the seat. Anybody that know me personally know I love Pontiac, white, black, all my constituents. When they calling me, I care. I really care about them. Because I'm not liking the way the city of Pontiac going. And as for Bass, Mr. Bass, I'm going on record. I got, somebody brought it to my house today, the charter. It's not personal, because I like some people on that charter. I'm going to read it. They calling me about to blow up with some of the things in it. I'm going to read it, and I'm going to hit the street with these new hookers I got. And I'm going to say, "Shut it down." We can't take anything from this administration, or from the council right now, because we got leadership. You didn't include us. You never do. A person at large, you mean to tell me, "Hell, if I run for council, you get to tell me what to do?" No, your constituents get to tell you what to do. That's the only person at chair get to tell you what to do. I'm not going to allow somebody in another district that working full-time. Guess what? I was on council. I didn't never get no sleep. We had part-time job, and we worked all the time. So Bass, look like the charter going to go down again.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I forget your name. Jackie, uh, you're the last one, and then that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carrington, for allowing me to speak again. Uh, I want to address a concern that Ms. Miller had earlier in the meeting as regards to the Martin Luther King Bridge. Uh, I did not want to initially, initially speak in case there were questions that I could not answer. However, um, for the greater good of the room, I will share the CPF, which stands for Community Project Funding Process, to understand where the money and how that is allocated. Uh, so first, the, the Committee on Appropriations in the House of Representatives gives out what is called guidance for the projects that lets us know what's available to be considered. Uh, next, potential awardees send in requests to our office outlining what the projects are and the amount of money needed for each project. Our office is allotted to pick 15 items and ask the committee to fund those items. The House Appropriations Committee releases their bills or projects. They then pass through the bill committee, and they pass, then pass through the House. The Senate goes through the same process on their side simultaneously on their own draft of the bills that include community project fun, funding projects that senators would like. The Senate passes their bills and through the Senate. The House and Senate then meet in conference and merge their bills together. All 15 of the projects were included in the merged bills, and the merged bills pass the House and Senate and then are signed into law. After signed into law, the agencies begin the process of working to send out the money. This can take a few months in different agencies. If the agencies need anything from us or the awardee, they will ask us and contact us directly. And the final step is the agency awards money to the grantee. Uh, with that process, again, this past fiscal year, uh, funding was just approved recently. The MLK Bridge was a part of the last, um, fiscal awarding, and that was $4.1 million from Congresswoman Haley Stevens to be given to Pontiac for, specifically for the rebuilding of the MLK Bridge. Again, the U.S. House of Representatives and the Appropriations Committee, along with the U.S. Senate, just recently, and I believe this was March, just passed the appropriations bill. So that still has to go to the president's desk to be signed, and then those monies have to be sent out from there. So again, there is a timeline and a process. Once the money has been, uh, passed through the court, or not through the courts, but passed through both the House and the Senate, it then goes to the president to be signed into law, and then the monies will be sent out from the agencies. We do not control that money once we award it and the, the committee has selected those projects. Uh, Congresswoman Stevens does not directly control what happens after that. Again, thank you, Pro Tem Carrington and council for adding me to the, uh, public comment.
The last one is Maria D'Agostino. How do you say your last name?
Maria D'Agostino.
D'Agostino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Maria D'Agostino. I'm here on behalf of the Building Committee of the Notre Dame Preparatory School off 1300 Giddings Road. Um, I hope to share some exciting news that the school has been working on recently. We all know that in Michigan, there are many roads in disrepair, and, uh, Giddings, specifically between Walton Boulevard and Perry Street, is obviously the Michigan potholes, but the road does flood quite significantly on any time there's a significant rain event. There's concerns with our, our parent population about the flooding of the roads, the, the sidewalks, the connectivity, the crosswalks. In the last year and a half, there's been three people hit by cars. One was a student, two were, uh, local residents. So I'm here tonight to first create an awareness about some of the issues that we're dealing with, but also to hopefully gain the city's support on some of the efforts that we're, we've been pursuing. There's obviously the safety concerns, first response times, pedestrian traffic and everything else. There's the environmental issues that we've talked to various government agencies about. We've had some positive feedback, some productive conversations. It, I do want to bring to the, the city's attention that this road is currently frustrating the school's efforts to expand. We've been trying to pursue donors, um, very heavily to expand the school. The school is growing exponentially, which is very exciting for the city, but, uh, those efforts are being frustrated. One of the first questions out of people's mouths is, "What's going on with the road? The infrastructure is failing. What, what can we do about that?" So the committee, our committee, has taken about, taken upon ourselves to pursue every avenue of grant funding. Um, we've spoke to some folks in this room. We've had very productive conversations. I was hoping that, um, Steve Van Gori, our Board of Trustees, could share some of that with you, if you would allow, after my, my few minutes. But we have some exciting news to share on some of the headway we've been making. The only common denominator that is, uh, relevant for us to share with you tonight is all of these grant programs that we're pursuing require the city's support. It's your road. It's your jurisdiction, so that is a, a critical piece of all these conversations. And we're just here to share that status and hopefully bring some positive news and see where it takes us. Thank you.
Do you, would, would you, council president, acting council president, like to allow someone else onto the speakers list? Speakers list exhausted. That does conclude public comment. Thank you. At this time, Public Communications Clerk. You skipped over my item. I'm sorry.
At this time, discussion item for the council, Councilman Goodman, Pullover Prevention.
Well, now that almost everyone is gone now, uh, this for the people who are remaining here and people who are listening at home. So on, I believe it was the 28th, um, but time flies pretty fast. Uh, I was able to hold with my district project fund a pullover prevention clinic, or a brake light repair clinic. To cut simply to the chase, uh, we, uh, were attempting to stop pretextual stops for a lot of residents by fixing for free their headlight, their taillight, and doing some minor repairs. by fixing for free their headlight, their taillight, and doing some minor repairs. And through very low cost to the city and through the support of multiple different community groups, a mechanic at Chavez Auto, being Tony, and a lot of his staff, we were able to not only feed 250 people, including 50 homeless people who live in the area in my district around Hope Shelters, but also repairing, I believe now at this point in the week, since he's had a week to do referrals, we have repaired in some way over 50 cars. And that's in addition to having tabling and resources and so on, so forth. Because a lot of people who came, whether or not they needed a headlight or taillight, the mechanic being Tony, was willing to have them come to the shop to do other repairs that were initially not covered just because they were things that he was able to do and he really, really felt like doing work for the community. So, one, just extremely happy to report back and, you know, take special thanks of the Pontiac Community Foundation for helping support in terms of getting the resources. You know, massive shout out to Uncle Jerry's Barbecue, obviously. Uncle Jerry is providing the amazing food that they always do for people, you know, again, on the cost of the city and our other supporters and not to the people who are attending. And a big shout out to the Gary Bernstein Health Clinic. And more importantly, to one of our staff members for City Council, James McQueen, who listened to me yell and complain and have him work on this relentlessly for over two months. So I'm very happy to report back on that because we were able to do something that I have been hearing back constantly since it has happened. I've been getting text messages and voicemails and emails and people asking me when the next one is going to be. This has been truly helpful to a lot of citizens. I've been hearing that back and I plan on doing one again. The next one is actually being planned for June 23rd, which is another Sunday. Yeah, I believe that is, yeah, June 23rd, which is a Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00, also at the Baldwin Center. With hopefully a lot more resources this time. The point will be to keep getting as many resources as possible to provide for the citizens because unlike what has been said for almost two and a half years now, I do my best to respond to the community and meet their needs. And given that a lot of people don't have money and time to fix headlights and taillights and I'd rather not see them get pulled over by the police or worse, I am taking it upon myself to use my district project funds and organize with other community members and groups to be able to meet a need that many people in our community need. So I am very excited to be doing another one. And just under two months at the Baldwin Center, I invite everyone again to come out. There will be a flyer that'll be done relatively soon. I need to update it because I do my own flyers usually. And that'll be out sometime, hopefully next week, to hopefully get passed around to everyone. And the same rules as last time, it is completely available to anyone. We had people from all over the city of Pontiac, not just in my district, because I do not discriminate in terms of who I help. And more importantly, if you live outside of the city of Pontiac, you are still allowed to come. If you have people who live in Detroit, who live in Flint, they could live in Dayton, Ohio, for all I care. If they can make it here and they need help, I am happy to have them there and happy to help out. Now, be it, we are limited on food. So I'm not going to tell you how much we have. I'll just tell you that it's more than 250 people, but it is not unlimited. So make sure that if you want Uncle Jerry's, you show up on time and eat your food. But I just really want to say I am not only very grateful to be able to have had the opportunity to do what I guess is my now second annual, even though it'll be more than annual, pull-up prevention clinic, but more or less being very grateful to be in the position to be able to help people with the resources and the power that is invested in me in this office. So with that, I don't know if any of my colleagues have questions.
Actually, I'll open up for discussion. Council have any, it's open for discussion if you have any questions for the councilman.
No questions. I think it's a good project. I can remember being young and poor and having a car that the taillights are out. So I can remember those problems being real problems, you know, when you're young and you don't have the money. So I think it was a great idea and kudos to you and to your district.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. Any other comments? I just also like to thank you. You gonna let anybody else speak before I come back to you? Okay. Councilman Parker.
I just want to say thank you for what you've been doing to try to make things better for people who truly need them. You're doing a good work. Please keep it up.
Just echoing the rest of our colleagues, I went to the first one. I'm glad to see that the second one, because of your due diligence and persistence, it was a great turnout for you and your district. So again, and you have a follow-up statement so we can close this out.
So I don't know if the mayor was going for his microphone because also I want to thank the mayor for coming out and supporting along with Councilwoman Rutherford. And one thing to what you said, Councilwoman James, especially helping out young people, there were a lot of young people there. But I really want to drive home the point that it's not just young people. The vast majority of people who showed up to get their cars repaired were parents with kids. A lot of people who, not to age discriminate, looked to be at least 40 and up was at least the majority of the crowd, which means that it's not just young people who are in health and disadvantage, but this is really helping out, I'd say, at this point, every part of our community because of how just these different parts of life affect a lot of us.
Again, thank you, guys. Councilwoman James, for the second time.
Just one final comment that, just what he said, you know. You know, it's about poor, people being unable, not having the finances to be able to do some things very basic and very simple. You know, the average income in the city of Pontiac is $36,000, lowest in Oakland County. And comments have been made about workforce development. And, you know, we definitely want to set the bar to raise that income level in our city because this is why you had such a successful event because we have such a high number of low-income residents in our city. And just wanted to bring that up because we need to work on that as a priority.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. At this time, City Clerk, communication are listed on the agenda. So please, you can go online and you can see tonight's agenda. City Council, communication are also listed on the agenda. I'm not going to read all of these items, but I definitely wanted to make sure that we know about May the 9th from 3:00 to 5:00 to be here at Pontiac City Hall, that we'll be talking about our proposed annual budget that the administration brought to the council. So please, on May the 9th from 3:00 to 5:00 held at Pontiac City Hall here in the council chambers, we'll be talking about our proposed annual budget. Mr. Mayor, do you have any, you want to highlight any of your communications?
Well, just very quickly, we did have a public listening session yesterday here in City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM about the design for the new youth recreation center. Want to thank everybody who came out for that. And I want to, again, mention, as I did last week, that we're going to have additional listening sessions. So I really want to make sure that members of the community are coming out and taking this opportunity to let their voices be heard about what we as a community want to see in the future youth recreation center that the city has embarked on designing. Those will occur on May 30th at 6:00 PM and June 20th at 6:00 PM. We will get word out about the specific locations, but please mark your calendar for May 30th and June 20th at 6:00 PM so you can come out and let your voice be heard about what amenities you want to see in the future youth recreation center.
Thank you. At this time, your closing comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start by just thanking Jaclyn and Congresswoman Haley Stevens for their support. I know it's frustrating when the gears of state and federal government bureaucracy grind slowly. But as I've said many times at many city council meetings, we're very grateful for the leadership of our state Senator Jeremy Moss and our state Representative Brenda Carter for securing $10 million in state funding for the Martin Luther King Bridge. That was approved by the legislature last summer, but we only received the actual agreement from the Michigan Department of Transportation to start receiving those funds a couple of months back and brought that before City Council promptly after receiving it. And then, of course, we're still waiting on the $4.1 million in federal assistance the Congresswoman Haley Stevens and her team were able to secure. And that was voted on by the Congress back in March. And it will be a long time until that money comes through, but we're not waiting on that money to come through because we don't need to. Now that we have that $10 million secured from the state, we're moving forward with an RFP, and this is already out there, to hire an engineering firm to start the design and engineering for the new Martin Luther King Bridge. And as soon as that period closes, we're going to bring that before City Council and move forward with the design and engineering of the new bridge. But I really want to, again, thank our state and federal leaders for securing the needed funding for the new bridge. I also know that a lot of residents are still struggling and suffering at Phoenix Place Apartments. And if the council president this evening will allow it, I would love to have our code enforcement manager, Jack McIntyre, and Community Development Director Rachel Lockren speak to the extraordinary measures that they're taking to actually hold that landlord accountable. I know that additional concern was expressed this evening and I think it would benefit the community to actually hear from our code enforcement manager about all of the hard work that he and his team are putting in to actually holding that landlord accountable and improving the living conditions there.
Actually, when we can do one better, we can put a discussion on the agenda for next week, Mr. Mayor.
That would be great.
Any other comments?
Actually, that, I'm sorry, forgive me, but that will not work because our code enforcement manager is on vacation next week.
Okay, so is no one in that department that can actually bring that information to City Hall?
Not like our code enforcement manager can, no.
Okay. Well, I definitely won't, at the end for the hour of a meeting, I'm not going to add any of those things to the agenda tonight. So is that understood? We had time enough to deal with this issue all day today. And we got the close of the meeting. So I'm not going to add anything else to the agenda tonight. You done with your closing comments, Mr. Mayor? All right, thank you. Have any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be brief. Just want to inform the community that the proposed city charter is on the city's website. And there are also copies of the charter available in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Parker.
Thank you, President. Just wanted to share with everybody that due to the budget meeting with the council, that District 5 CDC meeting for Thursday, May 9th, will be canceled. We'll reschedule it or we'll just pick it up in June as we get done with our council meetings in regards to the budget process. Wanted to give a quick update and I want to thank Ms. D'Agostini for coming this afternoon. We have been in discussions with M.D. regarding how do we repair Giddings Road, not just because of Notre Dame, but because it just needs to be repaired. And so there's have been some ongoing, some discussions with M.D. Been able to do that. The mayor has been in those discussions as well. So we just want people to know that that is being discussed. Want to give a quick update on the Lancaster project. As you know, we've been inundated with a lot of complaints regarding the Lancaster co-op. Certainly, the last week of April and the first week of May, they did a two-week mold inspection and the report will be back in 30 days. A household HUD came out on the 29th and 30th of April and did their own inspection of the campus and found that most of it to be, as they say, and I'll just quote what they say, it looked pretty decent, although there was some mold issues. There were some other issues that they did say based on what they've seen. It looked, most of the campus looked pretty decent. But to that end, and we know some of the ongoing issues at Lancaster, they've elected a new board on March 25th. They are seeking a new management team. We're having bi-monthly meetings with HUD. They are scheduling meetings to make sure that the new board gets trained. They're looking at the finances and trying to figure out how to make those work. I believe as of yesterday, it was communicated that all of the outstanding bills had been paid. And so Lancaster is improving. It just needs to keep moving forward as we do so. Want to mention, I think somebody mentioned this last week, with the Warren Clinic, it was a success. I think there was 179 people that came through the Warren Clinic. And I know that in regards to Lancaster, they're also getting the available unit inspected for occupancy because there's about 20 to 25 units that are available that could be occupied. And they are taking those who have any mold issues and moving them to the units that's available so they can do mold remediation with a certified company in those units. And I thank you, sir. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman James, closing comments.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Our, the District 4 May meeting also has conflict. We have a budget meeting on May the 23rd, so we will not be able to have our regular District 4 meeting on Thursday, May the 23rd at 6:00 o'clock because the budget meetings are 5:00 to 7:00. So I'm not sure whether we'll reschedule or cancel for this month, but we'll announce it later in the month. And also just want to mention that the 50th District Court did hold an open house that I attended, I believe it was last week. Just excellent, I learned a lot. And just want to say that we have one of the best district courts and the judges of our district court and the staff of our district court. We have an excellent district court and they deserve our full support. Thank you.
Well, thank you. At this time, Councilman Goodman, closing comments.
Yes, I covered most of it with the pull-up prevention clinic. That's a thing that has been the most recent, the most thing I've been most excited about. Plus, I was not here last week to give that report back. Other than that, I look forward to the next one that we were planning on doing to help even more people. Again, big shout out to Tony from Chavez Auto and Uncle Jerry's for helping host the event. Specifically to those of you who came about Phoenix Place Apartments, I would like to talk to you afterwards just because me and Pastor Parker care extremely deeply about housing and the escort ordinance that you are currently using. I had a part in that. Just to show you how deeply that I care about this, I would like to talk to you afterwards. Because this has been a thing that has been mentioned multiple times over, now it feels like over a year. It has been a thing that we have been aware of. It is a long-running problem. And any way that I can reasonably be able to help you, I would like to. So I'll be here afterwards. Because housing is a massively important thing in the city. As someone who, until I got on council, spent half of my income every month on rent to live in a building that was not worth half of my income on rent every month. I take it seriously. No one can take that away from me personally. So I would love to be able to help you out. And whether that be connecting you with the Fair Housing Center for Metro Detroit, who helps, you know, draft a couple, who helped with the ordinances that we passed along with holding some town halls with our code enforcement manager in the city in terms of, you know, possibly getting you some additional assistance as they do for people over Metro Detroit. So I would love to talk afterwards. Separate of that, there will be a lot more things happening in District 3 over the summer, hopefully, in terms of just trying to provide more things for the residents, whether it be both tangible changes like some possible district projects that are coming to fruition, like the pull-up prevention clinic, like students being able to get free uniforms at Alcott and Walt Whitman. So do please keep your ear out. The next District 3 meeting, because I do not think that it conflicts with a budget session, will be the last Monday of the month, which to double check, because I am sometimes very bad with dates, that would be Monday, May 27th from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We will have food, we will have a guest speaker. There will be updates from me about what's happening in the community. So hopefully, people attend. I give away the food that we have leftover extra to the people at Hope Shelters every time. But I would like that people from the district come and eat that food. That way, maybe I just have to buy more food for the people who need food at Hope Shelters. So I do encourage you to attend my District 3 meetings if you live in District 3, you have a family member in District 3, you own a business in District 3, or you just simply care about what is happening or what I've been up to. So with that, I say good night.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We definitely heard. We definitely heard the podium. I just wanna say that we do listen, we do take things in as we leave each and every meeting, so I don't want anybody to think that we're not listening to some of the community's concerns. Just some of the things that's happening in District 6 is that currently I'm organizing a STEM day at Ruth Peterson that'll be coming later in May. So hopefully, the robotics, the Pontiac robotics team will be there, a few other organizations to talk to our youth about STEM projects. Also, again, I'd like to say, thank everyone for coming out. I know we have concerns about a few community living dwellings, and I'm very positive that our code enforcement would be able to hopefully assist in rendering some of those particular issues at some of these living communities. Again, thank everyone again for coming out. At this time, I need a motion or a second to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, second by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn. Tonight's meeting at 8:10. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Oh, yes, no names.
We are adjourned.